9:01.
Item 01 is a, the item is to discuss scheduling a city council workshop on long-term energy options for the city of Naperville and directing staff accordingly. We have three speakers. The first speaker is Joseph Huss, followed by Richard Stark and Marilyn Schweitzer.
Thank you. I'm Joe Huss and I'm the Nest Energy Chair. I have three questions about the consultant that spoke at PUAB. What was the process that we used to select them? Who is giving them their assignments? And how much are we spending on them? These consultants have gone from community to community with the same pro-IMEA message to whoever, so whoever hired them knew exactly what they would say. An example of the consultant's bias is that they excluded all bond payments from their analysis, which accounts for 30% of our cost. A coal plant is a machine like a car and it has a finite life. In fact, IMEA will shut down half of the plant three years after we make the final bond payment. When you look at what we actually paid IMEA, you see Naperville spent hundreds of millions of dollars more for IMEA's power than we would have if we bought it off the wholesale market. I raised this issue because if the same staff who hired the consultants are deciding the speakers and agenda for the workshop, the city council won't get the information to make the best decision for residents. Nest doesn't have the millions of dollars that IMEA has to lobby, influence speakers, and place paid ads, nor can we use taxpayer dollars like the city staff did when hiring consultants. At a minimum, we need three things. No one with financial ties or fiduciary duties to IMEA is involved in arranging the workshop. That the process for setting the agenda is agreed upon, so all perspectives are heard. And since we've heard IMEA's perspective, we should also include experts with experience deploying clean, affordable energy. Earlier this year, Nest presented this slide on the energy selection process. Every city council member we've spoken to wants a workshop. There's no question about that. The question is how to get an unbiased workshop and when we should hold it. We want, we ask that the city council include in their vote, a workshop, a climate action plan, and public engagements be prerequisites to the workshop. In terms of resident engagement, city council engages the community on all major decisions, like the Fifth Avenue Plan. This decision should be no different. The climate action plan is prerequisite because the PUAB chair said their recommendation couldn't consider the environment. However, the residents said this was important by coming to this chamber with their "say no to coal" signs and via the votes in the recent election. In closing, doing the right thing is rarely the easy thing. We know pumping 40 billion pounds of pollution into the air every year is not right. It's not right for the planet, and it's especially not right for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
The next speaker is Richard Stark, followed by Marilyn Schweitzer.
My name is Richard Stark, and I have been a resident of Naperville for six years. Before retiring, I held several leadership roles that provided extensive experience in strategy development and evaluation, including serving as a senior director of strategy and vice president of corporate development. I have been closely following the ongoing evaluation of our electricity sourcing options, and would like to share an observation and a recommendation. My observation is that the recommendation to renew the contract by IMEA was made without first addressing a fundamental question, and that is, what are we trying to achieve? Another way to look at it is, what will success look like when we achieve it? Typically, this question is answered by considering an organization's mission, vision, values, and strategic goals. Unfortunately, in this case, we only had the, the electric utility department's mission statement to be used because we don't have long-term strategic goals in this area. This is insufficient to provide a clear direction for long-term energy decisions. I understand that the city council is about to decide whether to schedule a workshop on long-term energy sourcing options, and my recommendation is, I would support that, provided it is used to initiate the process of establishing long-term electricity goals. The first step of this process should be defining goal categories and initial benchmarks. By potential goal categories, I mean things like affordability, reliability, carbon-free, and value-added. A subsequent workshop could then be used to focus on setting specific targets for each goal category after ensuring that we have enough information to compare various options and confirm the feasibility of these targets. Finally, I appreciate your time, and also your proclamation of June 19th as Juneteenth Day, because that's also my birthday.
Happy early birthday. Next speaker?
The final speaker on this item is Marilyn Schweitzer.
Marilyn Schweitzer. Yes, please, schedule a workshop, one that will be recorded and allow for both written and public comment to be submitted. For years, the city has known about the rapidly changing energy market, changing energy legislation, stresses due to climate changes, and segments of the Naperville community who want the city to explore other options than IMEA. Four years ago, I requested the PAUB have a plan to evaluate our opportunities that would engage the public and reassure the public that our electric service and cost was being adequately considered and addressed. Yet here we are, four years later, with no plan. Council waffled on hiring a consultant, staff in the PAUB rushed to get a vote on the consultant's recommendation for a contract offer that expired before, could even come before council. Now it seems you have three choices. A, accept the IMEA contract extension should the IMEA board vote to extend the offer. B, stay with IMEA past 2040, paying yet again a premium price, providing IMEA still wants to do business with Naperville. C, negotiate a contract with some other provider, assuming they can ramp up to meet Naperville's needs and desires. I'm not sure how you plan to make a decision, but Naperville has already lost a year of planning. Perhaps IMEA wouldn't have negotiated on their proposed contract extension, but as near as I can tell, Naperville didn't even try. Had they tried, Naperville at least would have been able to lay out what Naperville wanted in a provider, but that didn't happen. A city council is needed, not to decide whether or not to accept the IMEA extension offer, should it be extended, but instead to understand what is at stake, agree upon a criteria for evaluating a provider, assess manpower needs, and critical dates for decisions. I'm not thrilled with the concept of kicking the can down the road for another 10 years. That would be irresponsible to the community, staff, and successor council members as well. So please, plan a workshop in order that the city can pursue a rigorous evaluation process that sets dates to ensure feasibility. Thank you very much.
Any more speakers? That is it.
The final speaker.
Okay. Councilman McBroom.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate all the speakers that came tonight. You know, I think, the first thing I wanted to say is, Marilyn, I think you're 100% right. Planning should have been done a long time ago. And, you know, being new to council, I regret not taking a harder look at this a year ago or two years ago when I was first elected. And I think I kind of bought into some of the narratives that we're being pressured and that, you know, there's this big, bad energy company out there that's, you know, trying to put us under the gun and make us sign a contract. And I didn't understand the urgency. And I don't like having to make this decision. I mean, people up here can call it, you know, that we're being pressured into something, but you peel the onion back on this, and if you spent all the hours listening to PUAB and, you know, go watch some of the meetings at NECA and you gather all this information, there are entirely rational, logical reasons as to why, there isn't some evil empire out. These are other communities, right? These other communities are asking us to sign a new contract. And so, so I, first of all, I think I'm, I'm in the same boat as everyone else. I would rather not have to address this right now. I'd rather wait a couple more years, maybe wait till 2030. But when you really take a look at this, the planning does take decades, and these other members do need to know who's in. And furthermore, you can look at these other communities as, I don't know why they would want to keep us in. They have a lot of reasons for us to not be a part of IMEA. I'm not going to get too far into the weeds on that. But obviously, I brought this agenda item in. I do think this August 21st date is not a bluff. I, I think that it's a very real possibility that when that date passes and we take no action, that that option is now gone. Our best-case scenario is what happened back in 2011, is that we do come in later and we decide that this is something that we want to continue with, and, and we get, we get charged penalties. My understanding that that has cost Naperville ratepayers $50 million. We're still paying penalties for coming in late, and that's, I think penalty is the wrong word. It's just math, right? If you come in late on a deal, there has to be math. The other members have to, the, the resources that they did not know that they were going to have to take on, they have to be charged. So, anyway, I don't, I don't see it as pressure. I don't, I don't see it as leverage. I don't see it as any kind of gamesmanship. I just see it as, as reality. So obviously, I support the workshop. I'm the one that put it on the agenda. We paid for a consultant, and we've paid a lot of money to outside legal, Townsend and Pruitt, and I think they need to be here and field questions from us, hard questions. I mean, that would be the purpose. All the questions that I've heard from council, we've paid people to, to answer these questions, and you can be the judge if they're biased or what have you, like, you know, it's been One thing that I would, I would ask Director Groth, as I read the CES report and as I've watched their presentations, obviously, a big concern here is carbon emissions, pollution. You know, cost is a huge concern, but a lot of people are concerned about carbon emissions. So Director Groth, if you could, assuming we have support, we schedule a workshop. If you could go to CES and ask them, there's three different things that I would be interested in, in them including that I don't think they have included. Correct me if I'm wrong. Carbon emissions of IMEA. That'd be number one. Number two, carbon emissions with the member-directed resources. And number three would be, carbon emissions if we stay with IMEA through 2035 and then, and then we get out, we don't, we don't move forward with IMEA after 2035. And with those three options, I would like to see, if it's possible, a price projection overlaid on those three options. Am I saying things that are possible to get from CES?
Director Groth.
Brian Groth, Electric Utility Director. Yes, I will ask CES if we are allowed to move forward with our presentation. I will ask CES for that.
Councilman Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. The first point with regard to CES's presentation, and not to get into some back and forth, and I can go re-watch the minutes, but I believe the question was asked at that meeting, the cost of our energy, including the bond payments from a member of the PUAB board, so that was clarified, which was still less than PJM, but Mr. Huss can correct me if I'm wrong, and I could go re-watch the entire video. With regard to this agenda item, and I commend Marilyn for coming and talking about that and having, having a plan and requesting a workshop. This, when, when we originally talked about having CES come, it was, people recall, it was originally voted not to and then brought back later, hence part of the delay. And the idea from, even prior to IMEA extending the offer, was to have workshops. And, and from my recollection, again, could be wrong, that some of the folks from Nest wanted workshops, a workshop or more, to get an idea of what our current options and options going into the future would be. And again, this is even prior to that extension. And then I know other folks who are concerned from the environmental aspect of it, that aren't part of Nest, that had wanted workshops as well. And I think we, this, this agenda item, whether you like it or not, has been paid for by the taxpayers, sorry, not the agenda item itself, but the CES and Pruitt coming, speaking to folks from PUAB, and while we have them, for transparency for the public, to make use of that taxpayer money that has been spent to include them in a workshop to get a better idea of what those energy options would look like now and into the future. So, I mean, from, you know, from my perspective, from being on the PUAB board, from hearing the various people come and speak, I think we owe the taxpayers and the public what, what we've learned about from consultants and the options that we have. Thank you.
Councilman Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor. A lot to talk about. Could go a lot of different directions on this. It's a pretty wide-open agenda item for tonight and potentially even a wider open workshop if we're going to have one. So I've got a lot of notes and a lot of thoughts, and just trying to think where to go with it, to be honest. And maybe just to start, if I could ask a couple of questions of staff, just to kind of level-set, to make sure everybody understands where we're at, at a very, very high level, because obviously, the elephant in the room is IMEA and their request to us, sort of unsolicited request to renew their contract. And maybe if staff can, can level-set for us exactly, when does the current contract run through, and what is the option? My understanding is there's not an option to renew in the current contract. There, there is an option to terminate the contract. That's a mutual option on either side, in that it could run till 2040 unless either side, 2040, not 2035, unless either side terminates with five years' notice. Is that accurate? Maybe you could give a little bit of detail there.
I think Councilor DeZano is going to take that one.
Councilman Kelly, I think you captured that accurately. The agreement expires in 2035. The soonest that it can be, the soonest the expiration can be actualized is 2035 with five years' notice. So beginning in 2030 or sooner, either party could indicate that they don't want to renew beyond 2035. If neither party takes that option, it continues on a year-to-year basis through 2040, still requiring a five-year notice to, to be able to terminate the agreement. So I think, you said maybe more eloquently than I'm saying it right now, but the, the option is for either Naperville or IMEA, prior to 2030, to exercise the option to terminate, at which point it would terminate at 2035. If neither party does that, it continues on a year-to-year basis with the five-year notice requirement through 2040. As of 2040, it officially terminates and no party can renew it at that time.
Right. Thank you for that. And I, I thought that was important just to get out there, because I feel like we've heard a lot of discussion for years about 2035 being the end date. I think you could argue, really, the end date is 2040, unless either side chooses to terminate the contract. And if you wanted to terminate it, starting in, terminate it starting in 2035, you'd have to provide written notice of that fact in 2030, or earlier. IMEA could, in theory, also terminate, provide notice to terminate in 2030 or earlier, which would end in 2035. So that's important, I think. The contract does not, to my understanding, include any option to extend, either for IMEA or for city of Naperville. They are now asking us, again, unsolicited, to extend it many years in advance for an additional 20 years, starting in 2035. And I looked through that proposed extension, which is in large part very similar to the current contract, in my opinion anyways, from a, from a form perspective. But a couple of things I just want staff to clarify regarding that extension offer that's been proposed to the city. To my understanding, it does not include a cost to the city. Is that fair to say? An actual dollar amount for what we would pay beyond 2035?
Director Groth.
That is correct.
And it also does not propose a particular mix of energy sources. Is that fair to say?
That's correct. There are no energy sources in the contract. IMEA has offered their long-term planning document, and that's been shared, but there is no mix in the contract.
And they've also shown all their member municipalities a sustainability plan, but I, would it be fair to say that that sustainability plan that we, we previously looked at, that was made public at a council meeting, and we, we talked about that, that's really aspirational in, in nature. That is not mandatory or guaranteed in any way, is it?
That's correct.
Okay. And, and I know when, I've met with IMEA on multiple occasions in different settings, some large settings, some smaller group settings, and I asked a question at one point to IMEA of, what mix are you going to provide in the future beyond 2035 for whatever members choose to extend? And, and they said, well, we can't guarantee it, which I think is consistent with, with what you just said, but we have to wind down the coal plant, which again, is the elephant in the room. And I asked why, and the answer I was given was, well, because it's the law. It's SEJA, and we have to comply with SEJA. But I think what we've also all heard in the news recently, is SEJA is not necessarily here to stay forever, at least not in its current form. There is an energy omnibus bill that was much debated, and this spring session in Springfield did not pass, but a lot of conversation around it. I would not be surprised if that came back in the fall or next spring. There is discussion at the federal level. I think the federal administration, I saw maybe suing the state of Illinois over SEJA. In my opinion, the fate of SEJA, I, I hope is solid, but it very well may not be. And if SEJA were to not exist, or at least not in its current form, is there any guarantee based on the contract extension that we have in front of us right now regarding how IMEA or Prairie State would handle the future of the Prairie State Energy Campus?
No. All the, as you mentioned before, all that's out there is the IMEA sustainability plan that was adopted by the Board of Directors, but there's nothing in the contract that, that specifically addresses any specific resource.
Okay. So, so where I'm at, at a big picture, and just to be very transparent here in a council meeting setting, is we've been offered a one-way contract extension that we didn't ask for, that doesn't tell us how much it would cost, and doesn't tell us what the energy mix would be. It really doesn't tell us much of anything at all. So I can say with, with total confidence that I am not ready to sign that extension, whether it's this month, before August, anytime in the near future, or midterm future. We also don't have any alternative proposal before us right now. Is that fair to say, from any potential other provider?
That's correct.
Okay. So with no real details from IMEA and no competing offer from anyone, I don't know how we could be asked to make any decision. Now, bring it back to the workshop, and I apologize if I'm going long, Mayor, but bring it back to the workshop. I mean, we're having a discussion tonight. If we want to have another discussion and hear from the consultant, in my opinion, the timing is totally wrong for that, and that's the reason I voted against hiring the consultant in the first place, both the first time it was brought up and the second time it was brought up. The consultant's information right now is what it is based on today. We're being asked to talk about a timeframe in 2035 and beyond, when IMEA can't even suggest what the mix might be, what the cost might be. So how relevant the consultant's information is to our decision-making, in my opinion, it's not very relevant. But despite my vote against the council, the prior council did hire them. The information is out there. The information is out there publicly right now on Granicus, on the city's website. You can see it on the PUAB meetings. You can see it both from CES and from the consultants. If we really want to go through that, again, I, I don't really object to that. It's, I don't suspect they'll do anything different. I would hope that we would have additional information as well. I would hope that Nest would be given an opportunity to speak. If we could get someone else to provide some additional unbiased information, Rocky Mountain Institute is a group that comes to mind. I know they've provided information for other member municipalities of IMEA. In my opinion, it would be worth reaching out to them or anyone similar to them. More information is always better. So fundamentally, I don't really have an objection to a workshop. But to Marilyn's point, I think what we should be focused on if we're going to do that, is setting our priorities. Fifth Avenue came up, and, and not to go on, on another tangent, but I think a lot of people recognize at this point, one reason Fifth Avenue didn't work the first time, is the council didn't, as a body, set priorities and goals for that project. And right now, we've not really had a session to set priorities and goals for our electric procurement. So if there's a workshop, I would hope, I don't know what the format would be to get this done, but whether it's staff asking us, or, I, I just don't know. But some way for council to have an, an internal but public discussion of what our goals are regarding pricing, mix, all those different things, I think would be important. And then maybe you can start to set a roadmap, because if 2030 is the date when we would have to provide notice if we don't want to move forward with IMEA, it's five years away. It's a long time, but we probably should get a roadmap going, to know one way or the other what we want to do. So I don't know what the end result is, but I just want to share my thoughts and throw it out there. Thank you, Mayor.
Well taken. Councilman Halsar.
Thank you, Mayor. I was hoping that Mr. Huss could come back up, and also, if Director LaClosse could put his slide back on the screen. And actually, it occurs to me, I don't know if I have a question for you, I just wanted to see the slide, so. Thank you.
That's even better.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Director LaClosse. So one of the speakers, Mr. Stark, who is, by the way, sort of the political engagement coordinator at Carillon Club, and I think has put on a political forum for all of us up here, does an excellent job at that, shared some of his professional experience, and I agree with what he's talking about. So like Councilman White, I grew up with military officer training, and the way we looked at this in the Air Force is, you set strategic goals first, then you set operational goals, and only once you're completely clear on those, do you start making tactical decisions. And virtually every military blunder you can think of in history has started with blending a tactical goal during a strategic discussion. Hey, you know, it'd be really nice to figure out what the goal of this operation, this war is, but right now, what we really need is a targeting decision, Mr. President, or whatever the case might be. And then you back your way into a situation that you don't even know what you're, you're getting into. On that note, when I look at this graphic, something like this is the roadmap to success in virtually everything we do in city council, whether it is Fifth Avenue, or in this case, the most expensive and important contract that our city will decide on in probably our lifetimes, my lifetime probably. What I see in those first couple of boxes is a direction on strategic goals. You know, how do we weigh out the competing interests of cost, the environment, all those other things? Then, once you have that strategic framework in place, you move down to the operational level, which is in the middle, where you have a series of workshops on a, on a major decision. You have a rigorous evaluation process, and then towards the end, you're at the tactical level. All right, now we've got five options, and here's the various ways that the operational principles and the, and the strategic goals fit into each of these proposals, and in a non-rushed fashion, here's how we evaluate this. And I, I think it's really, really important that we are crystal clear as a council of what we are communicating. level, which is in the middle, where you have a series of workshops on a major decision. You have a rigorous evaluation process, and then towards the end, you're at the tactical level. All right, now we've got five options, and here's the various ways that the operational principles and the strategic goals fit into each of these proposals, and in a non-rushed fashion, here's how we evaluate this. And I think it's really, really important that we are crystal clear as a council of what we are communicating to the community, and by the way, the other member communities who are watching us. Because some of the comments, a couple of council member comments have been very focused on the tactical. Hey, we essentially need this workshop to get a vote by August 31st on I M E A, which is at the very, very end of this. In my judgment, that is skipping the strategic and operational planning phases. But what I really don't want is for us to be unclear about what we are doing. We can't be doing both at the same time. So there can't be a strategic and a tactical workshop at the same time. So to Councilman Kelly's point, with sort of a 20-40 time horizon, and having the time between now and 2030 to figure out our strategic priorities, to figure out the operational goals, and to figure out our tactics, I am okay with a workshop, but I just think it is worth it to clearly communicate to the community what that's about. So in that vein, I'm going to move to schedule a city council, the first city council workshop in a series of workshops on our long-term energy options with a focus on strategic goals and excluding any tactical decisions about any specific contract.
Was that a motion, Councilman?
Yes, Mayor, that's a motion.
Is there a second?
Second, Kelly.
Councilman, can you just restate that motion so we've got it clearly?
Okay, let's test my memory here. I move to schedule a city council workshop, sorry, schedule the first of a series of city council workshops on long-term energy options for the city of Naperville with a focus on strategic objectives and excluding tactical decisions about any specific contract.
Point of clarification, Councilman, would that include the consultants presenting their report at that workshop?
I think in a strategic concept, context, all that is relevant information, Mayor.
So it would be included?
Yes, but I do want to at least make clear, my view would be if this motion passes, this is a clear signal to the community that this is not moving forward with the next gate towards an I M E A approval. This is with the purpose of setting strategic objectives in the beginning of a series of workshops to decide Naperville's long-term energy future.
And when would you have these commencing?
So, you know, I think that could be a staff question. In my mind, a time when there could be maximum community engagement would be great. September tends to be when kids are back in school, people are back in the area. A lot of us already have probably scheduled our summer schedule around the reduced city council schedule, so, you know, if it were up to me, I'd say September, but that's, I think Mr. Krieger and company can figure that out.
See, Mayor Krieger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the things that, one of kind of like the internal staff objectives that we've been focused on was maintaining all options available through councils, at least kind of initial discussion on that. So, you know, the one date that we have looked at, or at least cleared with the consultants was June 24th. You know, our vision for that originally was presentation by C E S was going to invite Nest to speak, and was going to have Mr. Townsend kind of available afterwards for kind of like comments or questions from council for that. So that's kind of what we were looking at from a timing standpoint.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I could comment on that?
Good, Councilman.
I actually would say that I respectfully don't agree with that approach. I think that is doing exactly what the opposite of this motion is trying to do, which is to focus on strategy and not rush for tactics. And even, let's talk about a specific date you mentioned, I'm not even here for that. So we're rushing to have a meeting that council can't even fully attend on the most important decision of the next decade. Let's do this the right way. So I'm going to stick by my original motion. Thank you, Mayor.
Further discussion on the councilman's motion? Councilman Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I would find somewhat of a hard time disambiguating the two in this case. Partly, for example, I know Councilman Kelly had brought up the date 2035. I'll caveat this with a question for Director Growth with regard if we're concerned with the energy as far as where it's coming from. Do you happen to recall how long it took Bee Hollow, for example, to come online from inception?
Director Growth?
Yes. I M E A stated that that project was in the queue and took about nine years to go from concept to completion.
Okay.
And it'll be completed in 2026.
So, just checking, do you... Oh, do you recall what that accredited capacity was?
Yeah. Accredited capacity of solar is about 8%, so I believe that's 12 megawatts for the entire project.
For Bee Hollow? I thought it was six, but regardless. What's the capacity that Naperville relies on?
Our peak is about 350 megawatts.
Do you recall how big Bee Hollow was? If I remember correctly, one of the members of P U A B said it was about the size of Springbrook.
That could be correct. I do know that the solar plant that I M E A has down at our Springbrook plant is about seven acres for one megawatt.
Thank you. And I'm asking these questions because we're talking about goals here, and 10 years from now, if we're looking at just one example of where to get capacity, 6, 12 megawatt compared to our, what Naperville needs, this is one thing to consider, and it kind of goes back to Councilman McBroom's point earlier about why we need to be talking about this now. You know, if we're waiting till five years, 10 years, to go, whoa, where do we get our energy from? Okay, we want it to be from this source. Okay, well, that's a tiny percentage of what we're going to need. Hence the reason why, in my opinion, this needs to be done sooner rather than later, particularly the fact that taxpayer money was spent getting options and looking at what we're doing now and future options. So if we want to be responsible with that taxpayer money, we ought to provide that information to the public and convey that information to the voters. Thank you.
Councilwoman Gibson, further discussion on the motion?
Yes, thank you. So I mean, I recognize the taxpayer money's been spent at looking at options, but there have been 13 hours of P U A B meetings since March. I recall the Bee Hollow discussion. That's just one of many options out there. And there were a lot of things brought up in these meetings, subaccounts, possible other joint action networks we could join, power marketers, and when the consultants or staff were asked, you know, have these been looked into? The answer was no. So setting that aside, per Councilman Halsar's motion, I like a strategic workshop. I took one of the quotes from one of those 13 hours of P U A B meetings. One of the board members says, "We don't know what we want and need," which makes it hard to make a decision. And I kind of feel like we're making a decision before we know what we want. So let's pause and see what our priorities are. I kept hearing over and over in those P U A B meetings, autonomy and risk. I mean, I think we do need a workshop or a discussion among all of us in the city of what risk and what autonomy do we want? We talk a lot about final decision-making at the council level. Those are the discussions we need to be having before we start talking about specific contracts. So that's why I like a strategic-focused workshop first. I like one that doesn't just regurgitate the 13 hours of P U A B meetings. That's all out there in the public. Anybody can go watch it. Again, it's long, it's a lot. I think it's worth pointing out that while P U A B did recommend that we renew, it wasn't unanimous. It's 13 hours of discussion and was a three-four vote. There was considerable dissent from the table, and there were a lot of questions that were left unanswered, that even the consultants weren't given the opportunity to answer when they were asked. The board just kind of moved on. So a strategic workshop is the first of many in this big monumental decision we're going to be making, I think is a great idea.
Councilman McBroom, further discussion on the motion?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Question for legal. Can the I M E A members, I think you answered this, I just want a clarification. Could they choose to rescind our contract with a 2035 date on it? Could they say no? You guys are out.
Mr. DeSanto?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, that's my understanding, that there's no kind of deadline when they can start to issue a termination. It just can't be less than five years. It can be more. So anytime either the city or I M E A through a broader board could choose to issue a termination.
And how long have we had this current contract proposal?
The current contract extension proposal was delivered to the city in February of 2024.
Okay. So I guess the first thing is, I think we should all stop pretending like we have any kind of leverage over these other members. They could sell our energy and be quite a bit better off, their communities, without Naperville being a member. So I do hear a lot of tough talk about they're not going to push us around. I don't think we have that leverage, okay? I appreciate the process that Councilman Halsar has kind of laid out. I said tonight that, hey, I regret not looking at this. I mean, it's really been the last six months that I've really kind of dug in on this. Councilman Halsar, you've been here four years, why haven't you started this? Councilman Kelly, six years? So now we're going to have a rigorous, long process. Right now, fine, I'll go down that road. I just want everyone to be aware of this August deadline. I just, I would not take it casually. And there's long-term cost consequences to our community, and so I don't know what I just heard. I think I heard that we're going to do a workshop, a series of them, I don't know how many. Let's go down that road. But the P U A B meetings, who, a lot of our residents don't even know we have a P U A B board, unfortunately, 13 some hours. I don't think everyone on city council has watched the 13 hours. That's just my guess. There's quite a bit difference from saying, hey, the public can just go, just send them the link to the P U A B, all the information's out there. It's a big difference between that and the people that they elected asking those consultants hard questions right here at city council. That's an actual news story. There has been some stories written about P U A B. But this is how you get public information out. This is transparency. We were elected to bring transparency. Their money was spent on a consultant, an outside council. They deserve, they deserve to have these people right in front of us answering hard questions. Whether that comes to someone motioning to do a vote on I M E A, I just want the information out there, and I want an opportunity for us. So if it's going to be two workshops, 10 workshops, 15 workshops, whatever that ends up being, fine. But I want those, I'm not going to support a workshop unless we have the people that the taxpayers paid to do research on this topic come to us at city council.
Councilwoman Longabow, sorry, I'm looking at all sorts of lights here. Councilwoman Longabow, further discussion on the motion?
Yes. I actually do like this strategic plan, and I think it does, it does go hand in hand with what my thoughts were on workshops in general. I mean, over the last year, I have not been in favor of these. I have not voted on the consultant, and it's all been because of the timing. And that's it. Not about transparency, not about anything else, it's about the timing. But maybe now is the time. I mean, if anything, we need to battle all the disinformation that is now flooding social media and everything, so we need to kind of battle that. I mean, this is going to be the defining decision of this council. It's a billion dollars. We can't afford to get it wrong, but we also can't afford to be sowing distrust amongst ourselves in order to get there. I have watched the 12, 13 hours of the P U A B meetings, and I'll admit, I'm still coming up the learning curve on this. I will remind again, like Councilwoman Gibson did, that all the meetings are on, they were all public. They're all available on the website. It is a lot, I'll tell you that. And the recommendation wasn't unanimous. It was four to three. So as far as a workshop goes, I do have additional questions on things that did not come up in the P U A B meetings that I would like to have under consideration. I think it could fall under the strategic bit. Power marketers, like Constellation and Next Era, it really sounds like they could be an alternative to I M E A or the joint action agencies. And I'm just, I'm wondering why C E S did not consider them in their report at all. They're not there. It sounds like they procure power and they provide those same ancillary services similar to I M E A. And in fact, Councilman Kelly mentioned the Rocky Mountain Institute. There was a letter on Winnetka's Facebook today that was addressed to us. It was addressed to us and St. Charles and Winnetka about power marketers. So I think that's something worth looking into. And then, of course, you know, C J, how that's going to impact the future energy landscape, and I'm kind of curious to wonder if they're going to do an integrated resource plan, because that could help answer some of these questions. So I would like to hear more, and I think it would be prudent to do it in a workshop as long as we're focusing on those strategic things. So, thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Kelly, more questions on...
Just two quick points. Just one clarification on the motion that I thought was clarified, but then there was further conversation. One, Mayor, you asked Councilman Halsar, the future workshop would include commentary from the, both the C E S and the consultants. I believe Councilman Halsar said yes to that?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think the motion even covers it, but I think staff would probably find that relevant to a strategic goal, so.
I thought so, just wanted to confirm so we're on the same page. And then just the one last comment I have, because it may be a few months before we come back on this, I feel like there's a little bit of a false dichotomy between cost and sustainability. And one point buried in the 12, 13 hours that I've watched or listened to is the cost question has not always been one way or the other. If you listen to the consultants who were most recently in front of P U A B, there's charts where some years I M E A was a little higher actually than ComEd, some years ComEd was a little higher than I M E A. It's not linear and it's not uniform. So just to throw that out there, it's not necessarily one or the other type of question. Thank you.
Councilwoman Gibson, more on the discussion for the motion?
Yes, I mean, I just, I think Councilman Kelly just covered it, but I just want to clarify my own comments, like absolutely, let's bring back C E S and Pruitt and Townsend. I don't think, we're just saying we want more. We want some different options on the table. But yeah, we've already paid for these. I think it's even already part of the contract that they come and present to council. Nobody's saying, let's not listen to them again. We're just asking for a wider breadth. Topic's covered.
Councilman Wilson, discussion on the motion?
Not much of a discussion, just think, bring everybody here, let's see it all. Just a quick point of clarification, Councilman Kelly, the distinction between cost with ComEd versus I M E A was slightly different than I M E A's production source contrasted with going with a P P A, for example, or getting energy straight off the market to fill our peak capacity from solar. They're very, so that's all I did at this point without getting too much into the weeds, hence the weeds would be for a discussion of this sort. Thank you.
Councilman White, any discussion on the motion?
Yes, Mayor, just a few things. I think something that needs to be considered, especially as we're talking strategy and operational as Councilmen Halsar described. One thing that's important is a timeline. I think having a timeline established, starting from when things at the point of execution and then working our way back, so that we lay that out from a strategic standpoint, I think becomes very important. So... So that's something I think we should consider as we go forward. Also, the changing in technology, that's, to me, a big disadvantage of going too early as we may miss out on the changes that will take place between the time, between now and say, five years from now. So I think that puts us somewhat at a disadvantage there. I like what we're talking about with the goals, ensuring that we have a workshop format for when this is going to take place, maybe lay out the number of workshops, start somewhere. If we need to add or subtract, we can do that. And I guess at the end of the day, we're, I'm basically is hearing IMEA, and IMEA may end up turning things where I would be very supportive of them, I don't know that, I haven't seen it. But I just would think that with something so expensive and so important for our community, why would we not have a competitive bidding process at the end of the day? And that way, we, I think we get the best pricing that way, and which would be best, obviously, for, for the community. So those are the types of options I think we should consider as we move forward with these workshops. Thank you.
Councilman Syed, discussion on the motion?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. So IMEA has become a very complicated, complex issue for everyone I can see for the last two years. Not today, not yesterday, not last month. I've been speaking to community members for the last two years about this topic, and everybody has been talking about IMEA issue, but we have never spoken about alternate things. So we all know the problem of IMEA, we all know the issues and all those things, but we have been surrounding ourselves with the same issue, but not thinking of coming out of the box and thinking for a new resolution, or thinking alternate ways what we can have it. I will give you a simple example. If you and me have to go to Chicago, we all plan ourselves in advance, what is the time, how much time, what traffic, everything we plan and reach to Chicago. And this is a billion-dollar project which we are going to talk about, approve about. And we have been talking only about that, you know? So my request to state attorney is to see, you know, what will happen if we don't agree the deadline of August 21st? So what are we going to lose? Or if we have a contract till 2035, and if we get given notice till 2030, so what is the issue? We can wait for next five years, and then 2030, can we give them the notice?
Counselor, you want to, could you clarify the question for council?
Okay. So my question is, August 21st is the deadline, they have provided to us to inform them whether we want to extend the contract. But original contract says 2030 is the time where we need to give the notice of the contract. So if we don't keep the notice to these people by August 21st, are we going to lose the contract, or are we going to lose any other things on that?
You know, I would say, my understanding of the IMEA board's decision was that they are holding open the option to renew beyond 2035 through August 31st of this year. If the city does not choose to select that option, it is unclear whether that option will remain open after August 34th, 31st of this year, or whether they will move forward with terminating early, or if we'll wait to see what our future decision is. But what we know is that they have guaranteed us the ability to choose to renew beyond 2035 until August 31st. What happens after that is not as clear.
Mr. Krieger?
Yeah, thank you. That, that's close. Right now, there is not kind of an active open window for us to renew. On their June 25th or 26th meeting, they are going to be evaluating an extension, and that would be, that would take them out to the August deadline. But they, they have not, they have not yet voted on that. We are hopeful that they would extend.
Perfect. So.
And just to clarify, Mr. Krieger, that was a extension for Naperville, St. Charles, and Winnetka?
That's correct.
Okay. Go ahead, Councilman.
So now my following question is, original contract is up to 2030. We need to inform IMEA that we want to renew the contract. Yep. Is it that? My understanding is that, you know, 2030 is the notice we need to give it to IMEA for 2035 to renew the contract.
Mr. Krieger?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As it stands right now, regardless of any action taken by the cities or IMEA's part, that contract will remain in place through 2035. If either party were to give notice of non-renewal, that non-renewal wouldn't begin until 2035.
Okay, perfect, yeah. You know, my biggest comment, I would suggest that we've, we've got a contract, the scope of the work of the contract with our consultant included, a presentation to the city, or to the council, and we need to hear the outcome of that report. That's going to be very important to us. I, I appreciate the chart that's in front of us right now, that's up on the screen. And when it comes to section two, validate our sustainability goals, I would also like to include our sustainability and economic goals in there, too. Obviously, that has got to be a concern of this, and any future council down the road that's ever going to be deciding on this issue, simply because our residents have to have a product they can afford to pay for if they're going to be able to stay in their homes, just like our businesses have to have a competitive product if we're ever going to be competitive in the economic development space. We see our neighbors with extremely high water bills, we see our neighbors now facing some significant surprises from their, their own electric suppliers through some of the larger utilities. And whatever we do, I think there is a balance that can happen when you validate sustainability and economic goals. You can have that conversation and use both words in the same conversation, because it is certainly a doable thing. All right, I think we're going to call the question. We have a motion and a second on Councilman Holzhauer's motion, and I'm not going to ask you to read it one more time, if you, roll call.
Syed?
Yes.
White?
Aye.
Wilson?
Yes.
Morley?
Yes.
Gibson?
Aye.
Holzhauer?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Longabau?
Aye.
McBroom?
Aye.
Motion passes 9-0. All right, our final item in the-